And I will go ahead and welcome everybody to the May 4th meeting of the Eureka City Council. Thank you for coming tonight. And we'll start with a roll call.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
House Member Cosselano.
Here.
House Member Moulton.
Here.
House Member Royal.
Here.
House Member Ballard.
Here.
House Member Burgal.
Here.
All right. And we're going to start today's meeting a little differently because several months ago, council voted to have a land acknowledgement for our meetings. And so thank you to our staff and to the Weot tribe for working together on the following statement, which you will find on all of our printed meeting materials going forward. And so, "The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Weot language is Jarujiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Weot and other indigenous people from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generation. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." And now I will ask us to, I'm going to ask Councilmember Bauer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I guess I'll just take seated, say good evening. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you very much. Um, so today we have another robust list of announcements and celebrations and proclamations. The mayor's report's not always like this, and it won't always be like this, but we've just had a lot to celebrate and to talk about lately. So when we do our proclamations, I like to invite our council members to share in reading them. And some of them I have a fonder attachment to, and this, this meeting, I really feel attached to every one of them. And, but still, I'm going to share those, share those duties with everybody else. And I want to start tonight by reading a pro, or to have Councilmember Burgal read a proclamation recognizing our public works department. And when we talk about the bones of a city, we're talking about the work that these guys do. And they're the folks who maintain our hard infrastructure, the roads, the pipes, the things that keep us moving and flowing. And like our bones, we only really pay attention to when something breaks or aches, and the older they get, the more they ache. And so thank goodness we have these guys to help us take care of those. And so Councilmember Burgal.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by town.
That wasn't me. In recognition, I'm sorry, I'm still a little that, uh, thank you for reading that statement that really meant a lot. In recognition of Public Works Weeks, Public Works Weeks, in recognition of Public Works Week Proclamation, we did it, May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, "Stronger Together." Whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Eureka. And whereas these infrastructure and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the organization, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation infrastructure, water supply, water treatment, sewer collection, sewer treatment, and other services essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Eureka to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore, I Kim Burgal, Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of the city of Eureka, designate the week of May 16th to May 22nd, 2021 as Public Works Week in the city of Eureka. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government, agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial, substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you. So if you see someone on the street, give them a thumbs up and give them a thank you because they work so hard. Thank you.
And Director Gerbien, would you, thank you to you because you are the head of that, but I'm sure you have lots of folks that work for you that you'd also like to say something about?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council. On behalf of the roughly 70 men and women in your Public Works Department, more than thanking you, I really want to thank them because they've been working tirelessly, often out of sight, to provide the critical services that maintain health, safety, and quality of life for the city's residents and visitors. All across the US, Public Works Departments look different. In Eureka, it includes engineering and capital projects, transportation and street maintenance, stormwater, water distribution, sewer collection, fleet management, code enforcement, water treatment, and wastewater treatment. It's a long list. And throughout the whole organization, you've got a bunch of hardworking people out there, like I said, working often out of sight and doing their best to make life feel normal. The mayor's heard me say that before, and she's said it on our behalf before. But that's really how we try to work, and I'm really proud of the job that they've been doing, especially this past year. With COVID, they've, they've been there every day, doing what they do to maintain what we need them to take care of. So I'd invite anyone from the council and anyone from the public, if you ever want to learn more, give us a call, pay us a visit. We will give tours, we'll give, you know, overviews, whatever you want. So thank you again on behalf of your employees, and thanks to them for the work they do.
Thank you again, Director Gerbien. And I know my hot shower in the morning and sometimes a hot bath at night do wonders for me, so owe that to you. I appreciate it.
Well, not, not me. And I remember one morning you woke up without a shower and
But you got it all taken care of pretty quickly. So I appreciate that. Um, thank you. Uh, next, I would like to, um, talk, or I'd like to bring up, Councilmember Moulton is going to read the Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islander, or the Heritage Month proclamation. And we have a local group that we have been talking with. And so after we read this proclamation, and Brienne, Merja is going to give us a small presentation about what we've been working on as well. So Councilmember Moulton, would you please read that proclamation?
It would be my honor. Thank you, Mayor. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2021. Whereas Asian American and Pacific, Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed in May to celebrate the contributions and impact of Asian American and Pacific Islander Americans on shaping the life, history, culture, and achievements of the United States. And whereas, the city of Eureka is home to over 2,000 persons of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage and recognizes the accomplishments of local Asian American and Pacific Islander residents as vital to the social fabric of our local communities and integral to our diverse workforce, including government, business, arts and science, medicine, education, agriculture, and law enforcement. And whereas, historically, Chinese immigrants played an important role in the West, building railroads and roads, working construction, logging, mining, canary work, fishing, farming, and domestic services in Humboldt County, mostly living segregated in a Chinatown, a Chinatown settlement in Eureka. Yes, despite their contributions, racist and xenophobic acts of violence and discrimination have been carried out by individuals, groups, and governments against Chinese immigrants since, since their arrival in the 1800s. Locally, this culminated in multiple expulsions of Chinese and other Asian people from Eureka and Humboldt County, instigated by local leaders of the past. And whereas, the city of Eureka condemns the Chinese expulsion of the past and the continuing acts of discrimination, hate, and violence against persons of Asian heritage. And whereas, the city of Eureka is considering support of the Eureka Chinatown Project, which is being led by a local Asian and Pacific Islander residence, Humboldt Asians and Pacific Islanders in solidarity and allies to commemorate the existence of Eureka's former Chinatown to educate the public about the contributions and history of the Chinese in this area. And to foster reconciliation so that all local residents and communities may commit to work together against racism and towards a more equitable future. Now therefore, I Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Susan Seaman and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim and recognize May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Eureka. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens.
Thank you very much. And I see Brienne is here. And so why don't you tell us, tell us what's been going on with you?
Hi, hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Hi, awesome. I'm Brienne Merja, and I am the project coordinator of the Eureka Chinatown Project. Thank you to Mayor Seaman and Councilman Moulton for that proclamation. It really means a lot to have your support, you know, especially in this month. I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the project. And I, should you, would you like me to share my PowerPoint? Or is that something that you would like to share?
You should be able to share it.
Okay, just one moment here. Okay, great. And can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. If I go ahead and put you in presentation mode, can you still see it? Okay?
Perfect.
So the purpose of our project, I, just kind of to get us started, we're the Eureka Chinatown Project, and we're a collaboration of community members and the Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders Group, also known as HAPPI. We celebrate the history and culture of the Chinese community in Humboldt while raising awareness of the local expulsion events and the federal and state exclusionary acts that shaped our society today. By educating our community, we hope to heal, grow, and move towards a more inclusive future. The photos on here are of Chinatown before the 1885 expulsion and also during one of the expulsions in 1906 down there at the bottom. I want to give a little bit of history as to why we're working on this project, and I will, you know, keep it brief. But you know, there's a lot more always to the story that we can always go into, and that's, you know, the purpose of this project here. So I, just to give a little recap, the Chinese were integral members in building the West, including Humboldt County before the National Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, and the expulsions that started here in Humboldt County in 1885 through 1906. There was a Eureka City ordinance and just an overall culture that prevented Chinese Americans from returning to Humboldt County until the 1950s. So before they were expelled, the Chinese built roads, then worked in timber and canneries. They were merchants, they owned laundries and worked domestically in people's homes. They even owned farms and provided residents and businesses with fresh produce. And the expulsions were not isolated to Humboldt County. They were a local result of a rising national anti-Chinese sentiment where Chinese traditions were not understood, and the Chinese were blamed for the depression of jobs. In the 1885 Eureka expulsion, a councilman was caught in the crossfire of two rival Chinatown gangs, and he ultimately died. And that was, that's what the common reason why people think the expulsion happened, but it was really only an excuse for the expulsion. The truth is, there was a rising anti-Chinese sentiment, again, across the country and locally, that people were kind of almost just waiting for a moment to expel their Chinese population. So this was happening long before this incident and continued to happen afterwards. Of course, not every Chinese person was expelled from Humboldt County, but virtually there was no population here. And unfortunately, that void has greatly affected the Chinese representation today. And we hope this project is a stepping stone to reverse that. I want to help create a culture where my, my children not only feel included but welcomed here. So thank you for listening to this quick presentation. We're starting this first Phase One set of projects off with the focus on the block of where Old Chinatown stood. That is between Fourth and Fish Street, and E and F, you can see. That's where Coast Central Credit Union stands now, as well as Ellis Arts and Engineering, Surfside, Savage Henry, Delishon Fifth, all those businesses around that block. We would like to first and foremost put a commemorative plaque on this block outlining that Chinatown was here, and we did have a Chinatown here in Eureka. We are also putting in a pretty large Chinatown mural that will be part of the Eureka Street Art Festival in the alley of this block. And we are hoping that we have your blessing to rename the Old Chinatown Alley. That's the alley that runs straight through the middle there to commemorate the Chinatown that once stood. We're working with the city of Eureka to update the wayfinding signs around that block to have some interpretive panels that give more information to people that are just walking by to learn more about the life of the Chinese as well as the expulsion that happened there. And we're going to wrap it all up and really try to help bring in more details with a digital and printed self-guided walking tour that people can do now in this, you know, in, in the pandemic world we live in. And then hopefully, maybe one day we'll do something where we have, you know, guided tours and more extensive education. The focus of the commemorative plaque is really, again, just to commemorate the Chinatown that once stood here on this block. The text will include a high-level overview of the role the Chinese played in the community as well as what they did while they were here, what they contributed, and ultimately why they left, which there were many expulsions, but the 1885 expulsion specifically is really what decimated Chinatown and what we knew of at that time. The Chinatown Alley mural is to celebrate the history and culture of the Chinese before the expulsion events and also to bring it to the future and tie in, or excuse me, to the present and to tie in the Chinese community currently here in Humboldt. Like I mentioned, I think it's really important that we create a culture where we all feel welcomed and included. And I think that really starts with seeing people that look like you in the arts and the culture. And I, I hope that this is a first step to that. Down at the bottom, you can see a photo of, this is the alleyway that runs through Old Chinatown. And this view is from E Street. We are looking at the, having our mural on the wall at the back of Savage Henry. So you can see that on the far left there. And then also Jenna Katzos is doing a map mural on the wall of Ellis Arts and Engineering on E Street over here, where we hope Old Chinatown will be included in that as well. Currently in this project, we're just now soliciting artists and accepting designs and applications for that. So we don't know what the mural will look like just at this moment. And again, it will be installed during the Eureka Street Art Festival, August 6th through 16th. This will probably be our largest project in Phase One, estimating about $15,000. We hope that with the support of the city that we can rename the alley that runs through Chinatown. And that would be to commemorate the location of Old Chinatown. The official name and what the design would look like is still in progress. But we hope we can commemorate it in a very traditional way by actually saying the name Chinatown in the Tuisan Cantonese dialect, which is the dialect that the people, the Chinese people that lived here before the 1885 expulsion would have spoken at that time. We're also working with the city of Eureka to update the wayfinding signs. And we are very appreciative of this space to do so. The interpretive panels on the signs will provide information to pass or advise and visitors about the life of the Chinese and the 1885 expulsion. We are looking at one panel on kiosk number eight, which is on the corner of E and Fifth Street. It's essentially on the Old Chinatown block, Kitty Corner from Starbucks. And then kiosk number nine is on F and Fifth Street. And that is not on Chinatown block, it's right across the street from Delishon Fifth. And it's right in front of Zen, the Zen dispensary there. So one panel will be on the life of the Chinese, and the other will be on the 1885 expulsion. And then we hope when the, most of the kiosks get updated again in September, we'll be able to be included in those directional panels that you see with just the arrows pointing to Old Chinatown, so people can easily find their way to where Old Chinatown once stood. And, you know, we can only put so much on signs and plaques, so we really want to make sure we can provide a lot more information to people by providing self-guided walking tours. And we hope that they will be printed and available digitally and really toward the major points of Chinatown, the life of the Chinese, and the 1885 expulsion around that block. And then also heading over to the waterfront and the boardwalk there to talk more about the arrival and departure of the Chinese, the life of the Chinese, and more specifically, the 1906 expulsion, where there were about two dozen Chinese salmon canary workers that were held on Toa Wa Island. After they came on a contract to work in the canneries and the, the townspeople basically rioted until they, until they were kicked out. So they were there for only a few days, and they were held on the island to await their paychecks. So we're hoping that more information about that and the self-guided walking tours will officially come out in the summer to capture people once things get a little bit warmer here. And, and the 1906 expulsion, which I just mentioned, is the photo that's in the top right corner of this slide where the Chinese were being held in boxcars on Toa Wa Island. And you can see a lot of townspeople came here to, to see them and view them. In a way, it was a really interesting picture. But we are looking at also, you know, building this out further after our Phase One projects. Once we get into Phase Two in the fall, and really focus on the 1906 expulsion and the life of the Chinese, the Chinese fishermen, what they did when they came here, how they came here and why they left. There was a lot of, you know, being expelled from your home is not, you know, no one really wants that in any way, but to do it in less than 24 hours is incredibly hard. You're only able to grab what you can off, you know, and just carry that on your back. And then you're, you're put onto ships that then are sailing for San Francisco or maybe Oregon. And, you know, to really capture that and to, to express that experience to people is what we hope to accomplish here on the, on the waterfront property. So we're still working through those, but we hope to build that out further coming later in the year. And in conclusion, you know, we're very excited to launch this multifaceted project. I'm proud to say that it's a full community effort with the support of city officials and local businesses. We're about 25 individuals that are made up of Chinese and Asian Americans and allies. We have historians, HSU staff, and community members on this project. So it really is a full community effort, and we're really excited to see what we can achieve. But ultimately, we can't do that without your support. So thank you so much for listening today, and we do hope that we have your support on this project. If there's any questions, you can absolutely reach out to me, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you so much.
Does anybody have any questions now? Or anything about this? Okay. In that case, um, thank you so much for coming and presenting tonight. And we will be in touch, I'm sure, really soon because you are continuing to work on, and continuing to work on your project. And I think we have something on our consent calendar about it, so. They did not contact me that long ago to suggest that they wanted to do this, and it has been utterly impressive how quickly they have moved through the process. And I also want to thank Director Slattery and, I mean, Director Slattery, Seemanager Slattery and Director Wood for helping, helping them to figure out how to make this work the best they can. So thank you so much for coming tonight. And next, uh, we are coming to a recognition that means a lot to me, and it's Business and Artist of the Year. We have been promoting these exceptional community leaders for the past month when we announced it in last month's newsletter, but now we finally get to do it with you guys. This year, the award has not followed our traditional timeline, kind of like nothing has been traditional this past year. And but this year, it's even more important to recognize the good work of our local artists and businesses. We are coming out of a whole year functioning during a pandemic. And as we look back, the general consensus is that we have a community who has learned to shine brightly even as they faced adversity. And the folks that we're recognizing today have definitely been beacons of light. When we are choosing the Artist of the Year and Business of the Year, the message that we continue to hear, that we absolutely recognized, is that all of our businesses and all of our artists deserve to be recognized. But in that spirit, we had taken the time that I used to use for my weekly mayor's address, and we are now honoring honored artists and business owners and our own employees, including our public work officials, to, um, talk about how they persevered and adapted during these challenging circumstances. But it was important that we did identify somebody so that we can continue the tradition of recognizing somebody who stood out this year. So this year, I wanted to recognize individuals who are both successful but who also were really cheerleaders because that's what we needed a lot of this year. And everybody needed a little extra support. So I want to start by recognizing our Artist of the Year, Monica Topping. So yay, Monica!
Yay, Queen Monica!
Yes, Queen Monica. So while struggling, we were, I was really struggling with this just massively huge amount of amazing artists in our community. And whenever we would talk about them, there was kind of always this common thread of, we should find out for Monica this, and we should talk to Monica about that. And everything kept kind of pointing back to her, and we finally went, you know, Monica, it actually be a great artist of the year. As an artist, I like to say this, I probably shouldn't, but I think she is the medium of the year, which is empty liquor bottles, to make her glass beads. So I felt like that was especially representative for the year. And even more appropriate that she took Semple and she turned it into something beautiful and shared it with us all. So not only, oh, my internet's unstable. Can you guys hear me? Am I okay now? Okay. So not only were you making beautiful art, you're cheering on your So not only were you making beautiful art, you're cheering on your neighbors, you were promoting everything. There is not a form of art that Monica does not embrace from music to, you know, kinetic sculptures to glass art and making jewelry and beads. And it's pretty fabulous. So, um, thank you, Monica, and congratulations for being an Art Artist of the Year. Yay! And I understand you got an award, that your award was delivered. And do you have a few words to say? Yeah, show everybody. Fabulous Wood Lab made the awards. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Sorry about the glare. Like apparently there's sun. It's right there. Thank you. I've, I've been thinking on this for, what is it, like six weeks since you announced this in the Art and Culture Commission meeting? And I'm still just kind of in awe and shock and appreciation. I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm so used to cheerleading for all the other artists that I don't know what to do when it's coming at me. So, but thank you so much for this recognition. It means so much to, you know, know that the stuff that I do, that's kind of my own, like art therapy, extends beyond what's just good for me. And, you know, it's just one big community recycling project, man. Thank you so much.
And Monica does also serve as a Commissioner on our Arts and Culture Commission. Proudly and actively. I remember when you got on that before I was involved here and you were so excited. So thank you very much. And next, I would like to congratulate Natalie Lee Lee for, she's one of the owners and certainly the face of one of the most appropriately named businesses in all of Eureka, Happy Donuts. And yay, Natalie! If you're like me, sometimes you go to Happy Donuts just because you need a dose of Natalie. And you get a sugar rush, you get a Natalie rush and you just leave on a super high high. And on all year long, Natalie was upbeat and giving back to the community. I think, I don't, I don't really know your business model because it seems to me like you're always giving away too much. Give away just a little less. Because she's been fabulous. And when it was election day, I went and bought donuts for, you know, the poll workers at my booth, but she'd already given them to everybody, all the poll workers in all of Eureka. So, and she's just upbeat and just like all other business owners had to face restrictions this year and adapt and pivot and doing it while continuing to support our businesses. She supports our community with programs like CASA and Boys and Girls Club, Shop With A Cop, Relay For Life and more. And it is a multi-generational family-owned business. So she is not the only one there. She does have a little bit of support, but they all work there. They just work real hard. She also donates to, yeah, poll workers, tree planters and others. They serve donuts as well as Chinese food and a variety of drinks from espresso to boba tea. And a free smile comes with every order. So thank you so much, Natalie. Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Yes, hi everyone. Hello, everyone. Are you able to hear me? First, just would like to say thank you so much to all of you and especially Mayor. Thank you so much. This, it's, and to, thank you to Mayor Susan Seaman and also to all the city council. Thank you so much for this award. It means so much to all of us here. It's like a dream come true. Thank you for everything. It's, it's, it's just like Monica said, it's still, it's still feel like dreaming. Thank you for everything and thank you for all your service for the community, for our city as well, to all of you. And then this means so much to all of us here. And then also, just, it's just something to get us to keep going more stronger and work harder to support our communities and our city and our county as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
To all of you.
So, and one of the great things about, this got postponed a couple of times and we're doing it today, but it beautifully fell on a Small Business Week, National Small Business Week. So I am going to invite Councilmember Castellano, who is our resident artist and small business owner, to read the proclamation for Small Business Week, please.
Thank you, Mayor Seaman. Well, one, one of several resident artists, I believe.
Right. I was really going for business owner and then I threw artists in, but yes, we have other artists as well.
Okay. This City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of Small Business Week, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. Whereas this year, as we collectively recover from an unprecedented pandemic, our city remains intensely focused on helping every small business remain viable, recover and once again thrive at historic levels. And whereas across our country, small businesses are essential to their communities, creating jobs and giving back during times of prosperity and challenge. During this National Small Business Week, we celebrate the successes of Eureka's entrepreneurs who have chartered their courses to provide jobs and a bright future for Eureka. And whereas outlets, sorry, whereas as outlets for creativity and ingenuity, small businesses do more than create jobs and foster growth. They represent the spirit of Eureka. And whereas during National Small Business Week, we celebrate the resolve and ingenuity of Eureka's small businesses, entrepreneurs and workers. Eureka's small businesses are at the very core of our city's identity and prosperity. And this week, we pay tribute to their contributions to our economy and culture. Now therefore be it resolved that I Lesla Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Seaman and the Eureka City Council, hereby call upon the citizens of Eureka to recognize Small Business Week, May 2nd through 8th, 2021.
Hey, small businesses! I know Leila Roberts is here, but first I would like to ask Swan Asbury, who has coordinated Artist of the Year and Business of the Year and helped write that proclamation and works with our small businesses, our Economic Development Director. And just to say a few words and then we'll invite Leila Roberts to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Seaman. Um, I think the only thing I really want to say is it seems appropriate to have Artist of the Year fall during Small Business Week. I don't think it's really pointed out often that every artist is a small business. And so it's really appropriate that we recognize that this year. So, um, thank you to both Monica and Natalie. You make our city wonderful and we're just so lucky to have you.
Thank you very much and thank you for helping our small businesses and whatever way I know you can. And then we have Leila Roberts as the Executive Director of the North Coast Small Business Development Center. And she has been working 36-hour days for this whole year. So, but still came away from another meeting to come and accept this proclamation today. So, Leila, how are you doing?
I am, I am feeling joyful today and I want to thank you, Susan, for, for the invitation to come say hello. Because there's, there's a moment here that I think is worth recognizing. So as, as the person responsible for providing services for small businesses that are starting up, are growing or are struggling, you could imagine that we have seen the full spectrum of pain and struggle from small businesses in, in Eureka's communities. And one of the things that has really struck me is there are the businesses that we walk by, the businesses that we walk into and we miss them dearly if they're, if they're not there, if they feel like gas in a mouthful of teeth. There are the business owners who operate quietly, feeding their families, supporting their part of their community, working from home as self-employed folks. And their struggles are equally hard or even harder, especially during this past pandemic. And their contribution to our economy and our community is, is equally great. Artists alone, craft makers, musicians, but also the nail salons and the professional services folks and the accountants. And as I think about the names and the faces of the Eureka business owners who have come to us over this pandemic year since early 2020, and there have been 323 coming through our virtual doors from Eureka alone. I think about the ways in which they have continued to struggle to keep their, their beloved and precious businesses open. I also think about the conversations that I've had with business owners about their employees. So, for example, there's been a lot of back and forth about, oh, my goodness, you know, how are people going to be able to safely accommodate customers while keeping their employees safe? Do we mask? Do we not mask? Who's going to get a vaccine? Who's going to get a vaccine first? My observation in these conversations is that our employers in Eureka are demonstrating a pretty extraordinary level of concern, not just for their business, but for their community. And the kinds of adaptations they made at the drop of a hat in order to protect us all are really worth honoring. I wish there were some way to safely go door to door and say thank you. And then finally, the, the last thing I want to say is we are seeing what looks like sparkles of hope coming through our doors now. Our business owners and future business owners from Eureka who are saying, okay, look, I had to temporarily shut down, but I think I'm figuring it out and I want to figure out how to reach my customers differently and better this time. So I'm going to take this opportunity to pivot and adapt. We're seeing business owners walk in the door and say, I totally shut down and I'm sorry that I shut down. I want to reopen or I want to start a new business. And, and I think this is actually an ordinary trend in economic downturns, but I think a beautiful, beautiful one in our case. We're seeing people walk through the door and say, I want to start a business. I was laid off. This is my chance to incubate and create something new and good. And there are opportunities for, for business creation now that there weren't before. So all of this is to say that this has been one bear of a year. And I know that a lot of our business owner allies and neighbors and friends are still grieving. And they're still really struggling. And I, I love the way this city comes together to, to put love and money back into our community and our small businesses. But I also want to note that I think we're going to have an interesting summer. I think if we can protect one another from cross infection, we are going to find that folks are making money again, supporting their families better again, and even starting up again in a way that we had no reason to hope for even six months or two months ago. So thank you for honoring our communities, small businesses. They are our neighbors. They're our family members. They're the ones that we love and they make up our, our culture. And they make up the very feeling of what it is to be in Eureka and of Eureka. So thank you very much to this council and to our mayor.
Thank you so much for coming and for accepting that on behalf of small businesses. And to end this little presentation, because we did say we wanted to honor all of our artists and businesses, Eddie Alexander made a video. And would you like to share that now, Swan?
Choosing this one to honor seems particularly daunting. I think everybody deserves an award. So this is special recognition to all of our business and artists for being adaptive and innovative and helping our community get through 2020. After surviving 2019, couple PTSD events which created impactful short-term burdens, our businesses had no idea the magnitude of road loss that they had faced in the mid-2020s. Restaurants expanded their footprints to turn parking lots into desirable places to dine. Dine-in restaurants adapted their menus and structured to allow for takeout orders. Restaurants, retailers and service industries all had to work around inconsistent supply lines for their products. Smaller retailers had to start online shops, which they ran concurrently with their storefront businesses. Salons and beauty service industry opened when they could, maintaining proper guidelines while working in an industry that often requires to protect their clients. Some of them even designed online classes to help their clients maintain their skincare or hair care. Childcare providers who are essential workers remained open the whole time. They had to invest in personal protective equipment, reduce the number of children they care for and work in environments with their children for long periods of time while keeping two to three-year-olds distant from each other among other seemingly impossible circumstances. Some industries did very well this year. Realtors sold houses. Boy, did they sell houses. Possibly enhanced by density refugees who learned that they could work remotely in South Humboldt County with beautiful affordable prices to put down roots and breathe. They now face a market where they have scarce supply to sell. Hardware and garden shops saw huge increases in people who were working on their homes. After all, they were there all the time. And even they had to contend with investing in increased safety measures, inconsistent product supply lines and a shortage of available employees. Yet they all did it. They maintained their businesses, which often required more work for a smaller return, while they applied for county certification to open, PPP loans from the FDA, California relief grants, idle disaster loans, county grants and any other opportunities to alleviate their financial hardship. They did that with the help of local technical service providers, but also banks and other financial institutions, many of which are also local businesses, whose employees worked long, hard hours with ever-changing conditions to become a conduit to those needs. Many businesses chose to downsize. Some chose a temporary closure until the pandemic is over. Some moved their businesses from a brick and mortar location to their home or online. And some owners post-retirement chose to retire early. Adapting to the situation is a good business strategy. And although we often tend to admit when we hear about these cases, they're demonstrating business prowess and faith in adversity. Our artists, which are all small businesses, faced burdens this year as well. I keep thinking of something I first learned. Laws make a society that aren't municipalized. When times are bleak, these business people, artists face many challenges. As artists, they also serve their community in helping it find beauty or sense of meaning through their work. I want to start by recognizing our poet laureate, David Goldberg, who started the Facebook page Poetry From The Edge, seeing after the pandemic started. This page allows poets to share their feelings with others. It also allowed others who may not be able to express how they're feeling to read others' words and relate. This was a year when people tended to feel isolated and lonely. Poetry was a great tool to help people find comfort, or at least to share frustrations with each other. That idea of poetry carries through so many places this year in the Street Art and Henderson Center of the Eureka Street Art Festival and in Window Up in Old Town. Performing arts has taken a particularly hard blow this year. Theaters have been shuttered, live music has been quieted. Our theaters have been using their major reserves to not operate while they continue to look for innovative ways to get their art to the community while preparing their venues for a future when they can all get together again. Many visual artists have had time to create this year with the trade shows and fairs where they sell their art and try it out. Many have learned to open online stores so they can continue to have it. Artists have been organizing like never before this year. They've been advocating for guidelines to allow performances. They've been collaborating to develop regional plans to support each other in our local tourism industry. They have in no way been dormant, even if it hasn't been business as usual. I want to applaud all of them for their creativity and dedication, not just in their medium, but in their commitment to supporting the industry as a whole. All of our businesses and artists, you have shown wit and fortitude, characteristics that I believe have always defined this community. Congratulations.
So thank you to all of our businesses and artists and everybody who participated in this and everybody who supports them. It really does. businesses and artists and everybody who participated in this and everybody who supports them. It really does takes us all being a community to keep us healthy. So. And next, this is our final presentation and it may not feel like a small business, but by SBA standards, that's anything under 500 people. So our biggest potential small business for coming to town for a while is Nordic Aqua Farms, who is looking to have their facility out on the Harbor District. And so today we have invited them to give us a presentation and we have Mary Ann Ness here to open it up. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, let's see, I'll just share my screen.
I will say while she's doing that, Nordic Aqua Farms has been engaging the community for well over a year. So now that they are coming into town and we're happy to have them here, but we certainly do appreciate how open they have been to having conversations with everybody. So thank you, Mary Ann.
Well, thank you. Um, well, actually, it's it's been a year since I was in in Humboldt. I've been stuck in Maine due to COVID for a year, but um hopefully back soon. And thanks to Lynette and Scott on the ground in Humboldt, we have been engaging with the community for a long time. And I've spent, I counted before COVID started that I've been there seventeen times over the last, you know, couple of years. So we've been pretty active in the community. And we're moving forward despite COVID. We have been able to move forward over the last year. So this is the this site scene. You can see what it looks like today. And let's see, I'll move this so you can see it. And this is what it's supposed to look like when it's finished. So what you see here is this will be phase one and this is the phase two of the facility. So we're currently in in permitting and to give you a brief status. Let's see here. We did submit our NPDS discharge permit to the water board last August. I just got a notice a couple of but a couple of hours before this meeting that the draft permit will be out for public comment. He said, starting today, but it's not uploaded yet. So hopefully by tomorrow. You can see it. We also applied for a coastal development permit or a discharge permit with the Coastal Commission that we anticipate will be up for decision this summer, hopefully in July. And then we have our CEQA and our coastal development permit with the county that is out for public comment right now. You can find every the ISNMD and all the studies that are attached to the application on CEQANET or in the county's webpage. So we do hope that people read through our report and also look into all the studies listed to the right that we have submitted with the application to support our analysis and the application material. So it's a quite substantial application and documentation, but it's a lot of good information to to read and it will answer most of the questions people have regarding the facility. And as I said, it's out for public comments. We expect to have the first presentation at the planning board on June 3rd. That's the 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 plan so far. We also applied for an air quality permit that we expect to to have a decision this spring. And in addition to that, we have to apply for an aquaculture registration and an egg import permit with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We have been consulting informally with them and the reason for it is that it's a new business. It's a new technology that you haven't seen in California before. And there were a lot of discussions and preparations they need to make and they have a short timeframe when we do the formal applications. So we agreed that we'll give them some time to to work through all the documentation that we have submitted so far. In addition to that, you know, we'll have our demolition permits, our building permits and all the site preparations that we need to to commence once we have hopefully our permits. So it's a lot of information. But I think it's a good read and we see a lot of interest in the community too and a lot of good questions, actually. They more than, most of them circle around areas like, what are you discharging? That's why the NPDS permit that will come out now is important for people to read if they're interested in that. And what about can fish escape from the facility and what happens if they, you know, fish escape? And several other questions too, but those are the main questions. Of course, fish feed is also not in the question that we get, you know, a topic that we get a lot of questions about as well. That's not regulated through our permit. So this is what the facility looks like and it's a fully contained facility. So when the eggs come in, we import eggs. We don't have a supplier yet, but we're looking at different suppliers and they're all overseas because you don't have brood stock facilities here in this in the US that can supply these eggs. And they are, they will be certified and they're free of all the, you know, the pathogens that you cannot import into or viruses they cannot import into California. So they're certified by the state of California once you you import. They're brought into to the hatchery, put in quarantine and then they get tested again. They're hatched and then they grow in the small facility for approximately a year. About a pound size, they're transferred into the grow-up facilities. So and here's where they grow to to harvest size. And they actually transferred through pipes, swim pipes from one part of the, from this building to this building or or this one. And once they're ready for harvest, they will be transferred into this building, which is where the processing facility is and the harvesting. And also was called a perch facility, where they spend the last week to 10 days before harvest to get ready for for harvesting. We also have a large wastewater treatment facility where we take out all the nutrients from the discharge before it gets discharged into the ocean. And then we have a water intake facility. So it's a highly contained facility. And the fish would never be outside of any of these buildings. We've also done a lot of geotech studies, so. And we have selected a methodology called ground densification where we basically densify the ground. So if there is any seismic activity, you won't see any liquefaction and the the buildings are designed to withstand earthquakes. The same with the potential tsunami. We've done a tsunami study and a potential wave at the 2,500-year event will come in from the north. It will hit, you will see inundation right right around here where it builds up against the building. And most of the campus is fairly low levels of inundation. So the 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 facility itself will remain intact, which is important. And so it is designed to withstand seismic activity and potential tsunami as well, which is, you know, important to to ensure that the there will be not be any any potential fish escape from the facility or any destruction that will harm the bay or Eureka. So in addition to that, it was just important and and we have worked with the local community college and also been in dialogue with Humboldt State. And we will be providing approximately 150 jobs when we're fully fully built out. And as you see to the right, there's several positions in in within the field of aquaculture or processing or maintenance in addition to administrative jobs as well. We have started our work with CR and they are redeveloping their aquaculture program. So there will be an aquaculture certificate and an associate degree and also the possibility of transfer to Humboldt State. So we're super excited that, you know, you will be able to provide a good foundation for people that we can recruit into our facility. So we do hope to get a lot of good local candidates and and I I have been asked, you know, how many people would you potentially recruit from Humboldt and how many would you bring into Humboldt? And I would say that I anticipate more than 90%, 90, 95% from Humboldt. There might be so few specialists. This is highly specialized that we have to bring in from the outside. But most people we we plan to build will recruit in Humboldt and and to build a let's say a a good company culture that can retain and recruit and retain retain people and be an attractive employer. So that's one of the reasons we chose Humboldt as well. It's a nice community and you have a good, long tradition of of fisheries and seafood culture, which is important. And I think you find, you probably will find a lot of good candidates already that have been through the HSU system. So we are looking into making a scholarship program as well for people going into CR and HSU. And we're working on the details right now and it will potentially prioritize certain groups that will like tribal members or or members of families from fishermen, fishermen, for example. This is something that we are working on and discussing with several stakeholders in the community. In addition to that, we are during construction. We will employ about 250 to 300 people. We have an agreement with the operating engineers, but we also want to make sure that we can use other local contractors. So we have not signed a full PLA, but we've signed an agreement so we can use both union and non-union labor. And this is to ensure that we can use as much local labor as as possible. Of course, it is a big project and our construction management management company is from outside. But there will be several bid packages and work packages that are suitable for local businesses as well. And and that's a target that we're working hard to to achieve for construction projects as well. And this is core course is down the road. We still need to go through permitting and hopefully obtain all our permits. And then we're looking into I would say probably a year to year and a half of demolition and preparations and engineering before we can even start anything on site. So it's it's a it's a long haul, but we're in there for the long run too. So this facility will be up and running for several decades. So our lease with the the Harbor District is 30 plus 10 plus 10 years. And as I usually say, you need to maintain your facility. People is going to eat, you know, 50 years from now too, or 100 years from now. So we hope to build a facility that could be a good cornerstone business in Humboldt and be a good partner for Humboldt as well. This is a very brief presentation. If you have any questions, we're, you know, I'm happy to answer and Lynette and Scott are here too. So we're more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions? And would you like to at least introduce Scott so that people know who he is?
Sure. Scott, can you introduce yourself maybe?
Yep. Hey, everybody. Scott Thompson. I'm the project manager engineer here. Started about a week before quarantine, so it's been challenging. But it's wonderful to be back in Humboldt. I'm an HSU grad, graduated in 2008 from the Environmental Engineering Program. Unfortunately, there was not a work in 2008, so I had to start my career somewhere else, but very happy to be back and looking forward to never leaving again. So thanks for having me.
And of course, we have Lynette as well.
Yeah. So I'm Lynette Mullin. I know the council members know me, but I'm an independent project manager here in Humboldt County, working as Nordic community liaison. So really my job in the community in large part is to create opportunities like this. I want to thank Mayor Seaman and the council members for allowing us to come and present tonight. Thank you very much. I'm also the one, if there are community members, individuals or groups that are interested in learning more about the project, have questions or have concerns, I really encourage you to reach out to me because I'm happy to set up meetings, address questions, whatever's needed really, because Nordic is going to be here for a long time. And it's important that community members feel comfortable with that and feel like their questions have been addressed. And so at any point, please feel free to reach out. The mayor knows how to reach me, as you, many of the others on the council. But I would look forward to setting up opportunities to share more information about the project.
All right. I did did note, you know, they are accepting right now feedback for their permits. So anybody who is compelled to support the project and I would like to encourage them to, it's it's really easy to hear from people who don't support projects and it takes a little extra effort sometimes for people who do to send a word of, you know, something. So if anybody is compelled, I would
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's a little bit of a putting you on the spot question, but I I'm curious to know, I know that when it comes to like the global protein supply, there is a lot of goods movement and that's a lot of greenhouse gases and it's and refrigeration is a huge contributor to climate change, just the sheer act of refrigerating. So much stuff. So I'm I'm curious to hear kind of, I know early on in this project, I heard a little bit about the idea of having more supply of protein to places where it might currently be shipped in from from a greater distance. So I was wondering if you could speak to the kind of environmental aspects of that and the food security aspects of this this project, because I think that that's something that that is very interesting to me personally, but also since this project isn't in the city of Eureka, but will help supply to the greater community, I'd be I'd be interested to hear about it.
Okay, I, if I can, I'd like to share a very interesting slide with you speaking to this. Can you see my my screen?
Oh, we did for a second and then it went away.
I I can see it.
Never mind. It's my, it's my thing. It's just blown up. Sorry.
This is actually the salmon market, Atlantic salmon market in the world today. So basically what you see is Norway, where of course, you know, Nordic Aqua Farm is from, is producing quite a lot of salmon, not not consuming as much. Same in Latin America. If you look at the US, especially this is the US and Canada. It's a little bit being produced in in Canada and a little bit in northern Maine, but the market is much bigger. And this is just Atlantic salmon. If you add to Pacific salmon and wild-caught fish from Alaska, it would probably be close to 800, 850, the market. So what's happening is that you see, and all this is, you know, fresh fish, most of it being shipped by air freight. And we're trying to to sever those ties and replace some of the fish that's being imported. And by doing that, you will reduce the CO2 footprint with probably down to, you know, anywhere between 30 and 50%, depending on the energy mix that you use when you produce it. And of course, it's also, you know, studies show that if you import, there's not all of it is inspected and 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 under, you know, the origin from where it's produced and what's what it has been, you know, eating and or fed. And even what kind of species it is, is sometimes not disclosed. So of course, you will get a higher degree of traceability. And what the market demands going forward is to to ensure that you could actually tell where the fish was produced, what the fish has been eating and if something has happened to it. So you will see a much larger degree of traceability and blockchain, et cetera, going forward as well, especially in in retail. So and our market is the the US West Coast. We have another facility being starting construction now on the East Coast. So we're catering to the local market because we have a saying that our fish don't fly. So we want to truck it out to the local market and the market is big and is growing. And we have, you know, have, you know, been asked questions, will you replace or displace local fish fishing California or in Alaska? And if you see the the growth in the market, it has grown quite substantially over the last 10 years and it will, you know, all projections show that it will grow. But the relative share of of wild-caught salmon and farmed imported salmon But the relative share of, of wild-caught salmon and farmed imported salmon is remain, has remained the same. So we're basically, the market is big enough for all of us and it's both growing. So, but you know, this, if you look at this, this is quite, you know, it's a crazy picture. There is no need to, to send food by airplane, you know, around the world like this. So this is our, you know, main business or main target. So I don't know if that answered your question, but.
That's great. Thank you. That's a, a great graphic and it really does speak to that, that concern. And, and I, of course, support. Our local fisheries and our local fishing community, but I, I agree that there's just such a need for. Healthy protein in the world and affordable options that there's, there's no end to the, the need for it in some ways. And, and you answered in my second question that was sort of percolating was around how you will transport up and down the West Coast. It sounded like trucking is the primary method that you're planning to use. I don't, I don't know if there's any room for innovation there, but. Well, we'd always love to see that.
There is, and, and in California is going, is electrifying, it's, it's. You know, all the cars, I, I would assume pretty soon and, and the technology is developing and technically how you do it, if you. When you distribute is we probably haul it to, I would assume most likely to Reading or any kind of. Area where you can transfer on to, to other distributors. When you do food distribution of perishable food, you don't want to go to each store that you're going to supply it to or each restaurant. You kind of want to bundle it with other kind of foods. So we would haul it probably back and forth across, you know, down to ninety-nine, most likely. And then we ship it onto other trucks and, and it's a much more efficient logistics, both from a environmental, but also from the cost perspective. So yes, it will be trucked and, and I'm not going to go into this, but I don't, you don't have a train and I know some people want trains, but it, it probably will be trucked. If possible, I'd like to truck it with electric trucks too. And I, I hope the technology is there, you know, by the time we get to, to distribute fish from Humboldt.
What I sort of was getting at was it would be cool if you could ship it by boat. But I, I realized there's a lot of logistical challenges there and there are reasons why that's not a major. Shipping option right now for, for goods like that, but, um, you know, certainly it'd be cool to see more use of our port.
Yes, I, I agree, but then you probably would have to, to ship it with other, you know, food and other. I don't think we could fill up a ship, but we know our fish and, and we kind of like to bring it into the market as fresh as possible. So. That increases the shelf life, which increases the, the value of the fish as well. So. But yes, you know, if you have a good set of ships going up and down the, the West Coast, you know, it could be possible, but so. That's, you know, an, an option for us.
Maybe it's a future dream. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I really do appreciate you guys coming out and talking about this and. Just as things tend to happen as they should, we're celebrating small businesses. You are officially a small business, but a large, small business. And we're going to be talking a lot about climate tonight. So there you go. There's our, our meeting in the middle. You for coming and that is the end of the mayor's report.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it and. Yes, it's getting late here in the West, East Coast. It's dark, so. It's, it's nice to, to spend the evening with you and listen and I'm, I'm impressed with some of the presentations too. So it was fun.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. Are we okay? And we are moving on to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on. On matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policies to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Do we have any? Speakers on the list right now or are we just going to look at raised hands?
I did have Mr. Jeff Reagan had requested to speak during public comment.
All right, Mr. Reagan.
Hello, thank you. Thank you, council, to those of you who attended last night's Zoom meeting. On the R F P for the proposed multifamily building over the city parking lot at Third and E. Echoed at that meeting were many of the concerns I've raised with you before. For example, the housing element that you approved says, and I quote. Encourage mixed income and mixed use development. The R F P will prioritize projects that include a diversity of market housing units. Such as affordable by design studios, student housing condominiums and/or luxury penthouses. Mixed use components such as corner stores, ground level or rooftop bars, restaurants. Or childcare facilities will also strengthen the application, end quote. Also in the housing element, it outlines the appropriate unit types for deed restricted affordable housing, studio or one-bedroom apartments. No more than seventy percent. Link's proposals had zero of those units. Two-bedroom apartments, at least twenty-five percent. Link had just under fifty. And three to five-bedroom apartments, at least five percent. Link's projects had over fifty percent, three-bedroom units. Planner Brian Heaton, who wrote the element, said at the planning commission meeting when we approved it, quote. We really want to mix it up. The intention is very clear that this is not supposed to be one big monolithic building of affordable housing. End quote. And yet, that is exactly what we got with the first three proposals. The inconsistencies between the housing element and what the city has approved in these first three projects is glaring. And frankly, perhaps opened a legal challenge. Similarly, the planning commission was assured there would be a vigorous public process surrounding the release and approval of the R F Ps. One of the key factors in last night's meeting was the frustration of the citizens with the lack of noticing and opportunities for input. Because of my unique role in this process, a lot of people have called me and they are angry, frustrated, shocked, confused. And feel betrayed. They feel like the people that are supposed to watch out for them are pulling a fast one over them. You heard it last night on the Zoom meeting. But one part of the solution to this problem is simple. Just instruct staff to let the neighbors and other members of the public join the R F P writing team for each city site. To determine what kind of building the neighborhood wants over their parking lots, as long as it's consistent with the housing element. Hold some open public meetings where all citizens can have some real input into the R F P ideas. And then when the proposals come in, let the public judge the submitted proposals. We citizens love our city and we want to be part of deciding how it grows. We have much better ideas of what will work here than some developer from Long Beach. So let us get involved and be creative. We don't want a small group of mostly city staff just telling us what we're going to have to live with. Thanks.
You're mute, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I said, thank you, Jeff. And, and I don't see another, any other raised hands. Do you see any that I don't see?
I do not.
All right. We'll see none. I will bring us back. To our. Public hearings, item A. And we're looking at item A one, public hearing for. I'm sorry, community development block grant C D B G application for possible funding. So. Yes, sir.
This is Bob Black. I'm wondering if we can insert the report out of closed session here before we start the.
Oh, I am so sorry. I skipped that. I. Did not mean to. Yes, let's go ahead and insert. Do we have a report out for closed session?
Yes, and it's momentous. There's no, there are no action to report out of closed session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am very sorry to skip that. Now we will go back to the public hearing for C D B G and I will invite our housing technician. Kristin Raymond, who I understand is going to be the star of the rest of the show tonight, pretty much. You got a lot of work tonight. Is Raymond.
Mayor and city council members.
There you are.
I'm going to ask to be able to share my screen so I can. Do a slideshow for you.
You can go ahead and share screen.
Can you guys see it?
Yes.
This evening, I was presenting on the twenty twenty-one community development block grant. I don't know why mine's not letting me.
Now we see an owl. Okay, now I'm doing.
Sorry. Okay, here we go. Okay, is that better?
Much better.
Okay. So this evening, I am presenting on the twenty twenty-one community development block grant. The twenty twenty-one community development block grant eligible activities are as follows. Under economic development, we have over the counter enterprise fund, planning and technical assistance. Under housing and housing related infrastructure. We have single and multifamily rehabilitation. Home ownership assistance and support of housing construction. And then we have public services and under public services, we have staff and operational costs associated with the community facility. The city of Eureka would benefit from these identified activities. The home buyer program. Owner occupied rehabilitation. And a planning and technical assistance grant. Community development block grant allows jurisdictions to apply for five hundred thousand for the home buyer assistance program. To help assist families become homeowners. Home ownership, also known as, are better, better described as gap financing. Would, would assist those individuals and families who are at eighty percent or below area median income. With a one point five interest rate. And a low down payment requirement. Community development block grant also allows jurisdictions to apply for five hundred thousand for the owner occupied rehabilitation program. Also known as the O O R. With a low interest rate. To individuals who qualify and one of those qualifications again is being eighty percent or below area median income. The owner occupied rehabilitation program would allow the city to invest in some of the existing stocks in the city. To financially assist those families to improve their homes. And last, a planning and technical assistance grant. Requested by Humboldt Senior Resource Center. For access organizational capacity and potential expansion. Humboldt Senior Resource Center is seeking a C D B G grant to assist in the analysis of options related to the program staffing and participating services. The proposed planning and technical assistance study will analyze the organization's current capacity. Consider opportunities for additional services for the community, evaluate staffing needs for the organization's current and looking towards the future needs. Staff recommendation. Full public hearing and receive public comment on potential projects for funding under the twenty twenty-one funding year of the state C D B G program and. Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka approving an application for funding from the twenty twenty-one funding year of the state community block grant. Program not to exceed the max amount of one point five million. And to execute the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto identifying responsible parties for a grant administrator. And I'm going to go back to that slide, just so we have it on the screen, if you guys don't mind.
All right. Do we have any questions from council about this item? All right. Then I will open up this public hearing and ask, is there anybody in the audience who wanted to speak on this item? I don't see any hands. Do you see any hands?
Mayor, we were not, I, no one. Signed up, but maybe if we can stop sharing screen too, it'll be a little easier. Perfect. All right. And I. Am not seeing any raised hands.
All righty. So you could start sharing screens again and I will close this public hearing and bring it back and see if anybody has any comments or would like to make a motion. Oh, council member Braga.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Kristin. I'm really excited about the rehab loans for folks. I think that, that, you know, as I walk around our city, I see so many properties that could use some T L C. I hope people are willing to take advantage of that. That, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka. Approving an application for funding from the twenty twenty-one funding year of the state community development. C D B G program not to exceed the maximum amount of one point five million dollars. The execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto identifying the responsible parties for grant administration.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, council member Royal. And do we have any more discussion on this item? Seen none. I will ask for all call up.
All righty. Council member Costalano.
Hi.
Council member Molton.
Hi.
Council member Arroyo.
Hi.
Council member Bauer.
Hi.
And council member Braga.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll see you in a little bit. Next up is our consent calendar. Did anybody want to pull anything? I didn't hear of anything. Then do I have a motion then to accept the consent calendar?
I moved. I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item? Then let's have a vote, please.
Council member Costalano.
Hi.
Council member Molton.
Yes.
Council member Arroyo.
Hi.
Council member Bauer.
Yes.
Council member Braga.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. And I am going to invite Director Gerbey to come up and talk about the Eureka flood reduction and sea level rise project.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the item that's before you tonight is a, a follow-up. On a hazard mitigation, well, kind of tearing off of an earlier hazard mitigation grant program award. This is a program that would be used to provide match funding to that earlier grant award. And allow us to expand this great project on the west side of the city to reduce. Stormwater runoff, to reduce flooding and to better protect against future sea level rise. And what's before you tonight is basically adopting a resolution to. Say that the city is interested in that Prop sixty-eight funding through the California Natural Resources Agency. And also to designate staff to execute the necessary grant documents should the city be successful. This is one, typically you see these types of resolutions after we have received the grant. This is one that's necessary to proceed to the next phase of the review process.
All right. Ready for questions? Does anybody have any questions for Director Gerbey? There you go. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
I'm no mayor. I did not have any requests.
All right. I will bring it back then to council for any comments or emotion.
Some move stock recommendation.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Then I will ask please for a call up.
Council member Costalano.
Hi.
Council member Molton.
Hi.
Council member Arroyo. Councilmember Royal.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. So we are going to move on to item C2, which is the Text and Local Coastal Program Amendment to Increase Coastal Service Commercial Zone District Building Height From 35 Feet to 55 Feet. And Housing Technician Kristen Raymond will be, I believe, talking about this.
Actually, it will be Principal Planner guess, I believe.
That made more sense to me. We just went from one Kristen to the next when we were talking at the agenda review, so I just wrote down Kristen Raymond.
Thank you, Mayor. Senior Planner Lisa Savage is actually going to present this one to you tonight.
Madam Mayor, good evening. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
Oh, from beginning.
There you go.
Now you're showing the screen.
Or, can I switch it up to you?
Practice, Dave.
Stop share. There again. There's this one.
There we go.
Okay, everybody can see it now, thank you. So yeah, this evening we have a Text and Local Coastal Program Amendment, LCP 190003 and TA-190007. It involves the Coastal Service Commercial Zone District, and the applicant was John Kohler. Why am I, there we go. On January 21st, 2020, council approved the amendment to the Implementation Plan portion of the Local Coastal Program, or LCP, to increase the building height limit within the Coastal Service Commercial, or CS, Zone District from 35 feet to 55 feet. The amendment provided consistency with the inland service commercial zoning district's height limit established under the June 2019 Inland Zoning Code update. So the project area includes 320 parcels within the coastal CS Zone District, Eureka's downtown, old town area, east of Myrtle Avenue, Jacobs Avenue, Harper Motors, portion of Indianola, a portion of the former Kmart building, and several strips along the west side of Broadway and southern Eureka. This is a map showing the CS Zone District. And on February 12th, 2021, the California Coastal Commission certified the LCP amendment with a modification to the city's proposed amendment. The Coastal Commission is requiring that the city retain the existing 35-foot height limit on CS Zone properties in the coastal zone inland of Highway 101 and northeast of the Eureka Slough, which would include CS Zone land at Jacobs Avenue, Harper Motors, and a portion of the Indianola cutoff. The Coastal Commission found that these three CS Zone properties afforded scenic views and required protection of the visual resources by retaining the 35-foot height in these locations, and they adopted the amendment with the condition that the existing 35-foot building height limit on the CS Zone lands along the inland side of Highway 101, northeast of Eureka Slough, in the northeastern portion of the city had to be retained. And as required by Eureka Municipal Code on April 12th, 2021, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending council approve the modification to the LCP amendment. The three areas that we just talked about are Jacobs Avenue, Harper Motors, and the portion of the Indianola cutoff. These are the three sites that will be, three areas that will be maintained at 35-foot height for the buildings. Staff recommendation, wave reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 996-CS and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka, amending the Implementation Plan portion of the Local Coastal Program to maintain the building height limit of 35 feet within the Coastal Service Commercial Zone District inland of Highway 101 and northeast of Eureka Slough. And the suggested motion.
Thank you very much, and I can see you all now. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Bergel.
So I was just curious where the Brainerd property fits in with this.
Counselor, Principal Planner guess, I saw you just turn your thing on. Were you going to answer, or Counselor Lisa Savage?
I can answer that one for Councilmember Bergel. The Brainerd property is not zoned CS, it's zoned general industrial.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Moulton.
I'm a little confused. Does this actually raise the height limit in the other areas, but limits the height limit in these specific parts? Are there two pieces to this, or is it just limiting, reasserting the 35-foot height limit in those specific places?
We raised the height limit back in 2019, and that was approved, but they retained these three sites out of the 55-foot height limit and kept them at 35 feet because of the visual quality of the area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will ask if we have any comments from the public?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All righty, I will then bring it back for a discussion or emotion. Okay, Councilmember Bergel, go for it.
I move the City Council Wave Reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 996-CS and ordinance of the City Council amending the Implementation Plan IP portion of the Local Coastal Program, LCP, maintain the building height limit of 35 feet within the Coastal Service Commercial CS Zone District inland of Highway 101 northeast of Eureka Slough as certified by the Coastal Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on this item? All right, it looks like we're ready for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Costalano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Royal.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, moving right along. We are going to go, I believe this is Senior Planner guess, to report on the Climate Action Plan?
Yes.
All right.
And it is, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So, our community has a tradition of resiliency. The city has and will continue to create goals and policies and plans to sustain and improve our livelihoods as we experience and prepare to experience climate-related disruptions to our local economy, including drastic changes in average temperature, threats to our built infrastructure, power outages, sea level rise, and disturbances to our natural and working lands. In late 2018, each of the eight jurisdictions in Humboldt County formed a coalition to create the Humboldt County 2030 Regional Climate Action Plan, also referred to as a CAP. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to some of the high-level key ideas that will likely be contained in the draft document, which by the end of the process will be a product of over three years of collaboration between the public, staff from each of the eight jurisdictions, Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and Environmental Indicator Accounting Services. An administrative draft of the Regional Climate Action Plan has been prepared and is undergoing review by coalition staff members. And I'm going to share with you the proposed timeline and next steps in a few minutes. But first, the overall goal of the project is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout the county. And as a note, while climate action can mean many different things, in this particular context, we're talking mostly about figuring out ways to reduce emissions. With its cap and trade system and ambitious emissions and clean energy targets, California is a world leader in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The state has adopted some key legislation and policy, such as AB 32 and SB 32, which establish targets for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions from activities and sources within the state, and SB 97, which required the SEQUEL guidelines be updated to require that potential projects assess GHG emissions as part of SEQUEL review. As an overall note, a climate action plan should establish a level based on substantial evidence below which greenhouse gas emissions would not be cumulatively considerable. Our Regional Climate Action Plan is proposing to use the 1990 emissions level. As I mentioned before, the Regional CAP was launched in 2018. After we assembled a working group consisting of staff from the county and seven incorporated cities, RCEA completed GHG inventories for both 1990 and 2015, as well as a GHG forecast out to 2040. Following that, a broad list of candidate GHG reduction measures were created, and the process of selecting measures for the CAP began. We're currently wrapping up the first administrative draft of the CAP, and following that, we'll begin the SEQUEL process. Ultimately, the goal is for each jurisdiction to adopt their element of the Regional CAP, and we're hoping that that happens in the fall of this year. SEQUEL's main purpose is to inform the public and decision-makers of environmental impacts of a project and to mitigate for those impacts. SEQUEL guidelines require agencies to address greenhouse gas emissions, and lead agencies are required to analyze the GHG emissions of proposed projects and reach a conclusion regarding the significance of those emissions. When a project's GHG emissions are significant, lead agencies have to consider a range of potential mitigation measures to reduce those emissions. A qualified climate action plan can be used to tier off of or streamline the environmental review of future projects, which can save time and money during the environmental review process. In order to get the benefits of streamlining, SEQUEL requires that a climate action plan meet a few requirements. The CAP must contain a GHG inventory and forecast, local GHG reduction targets that are in line with state targets, quantified GHG reduction measures that demonstrate how the CAP will reach the target, and an implementation and monitoring plan. A SEQUEL qualified CAP meets all the requirements listed on the previous slide, and it has requirements to implement, monitor, and update the levels of GHG emissions as time goes on, and is therefore eligible to allow projects to tier off of the CAP itself. A non-qualified CAP does not require implementation monitoring or updating of GHG emissions over time, and is therefore not eligible to allow tiering. As we move later into the stages of the CAP project, we're looking at these two possible scenarios related to qualified and non-qualified CAPs and SEQUEL. There are challenges related to developing a qualified CAP. If it's going to be used for tiering, we will have to set and adhere to ambitious targets, and we will have to demonstrate over the years that we're making progress towards those targets. We are still working on different major commitment scenarios, and we don't have a clear direction between these two options yet. And we also want to provide opportunities for feedback from both council and the public on this matter. So let's talk about our GHG inventory. Countywide, the largest contributor to GHG emissions is transportation. Stationary combustion includes the use of fuels like natural gas and propane, and this category primarily captures emissions from building energy consumption. The electricity consumption category includes emissions associated with the generation of electricity, both inside and outside the county, and is based on the amount of electricity consumed in the county in 2015. While we're not really addressing industrial sources in our CAP because CAPs are focused planning documents and don't typically address every single possible source of emissions, instead they focus on sources over which the local government has some degree of influence, and industrial emissions are primarily regulated by state and federal agencies. We are, however, concentrating on sources that we do have some degree of influence over, including livestock, solid waste, water treatment, and even leaked refrigerants. This slide shows a more detailed breakdown of some of the major sources of emissions in the 2015 inventory with building energy consumption broken out into both natural gas and electricity, and on-road transportation broken out into diesel and natural gas. By jurisdiction, the breakdown of emissions tracks pretty closely to each jurisdiction's population share. The unincorporated county share of emissions is a bit higher than its share of the population, primarily because the vast majority of livestock operations are located in unincorporated areas. You may be asking why the CAP Coalition is considering the 1990 levels over levels from other years. This graph shows the total countywide emissions in metric tons of CO2. And on the left side, you can see there was a significant drop in emissions of 29% between 1990 and 2015, when you include industrial sources in the emissions totals. This drop was due probably to the closure of some major industrial facilities, primarily timber processing over that span of time. Then on the right, you can see the 11% reduction in emissions between 1990 and 2015 without considering industrial sources, and while the drop is smaller, it is still a reduction. Over the years, the state has set a number of GHG reduction targets, and they tend to get a little more ambitious every time they set a new number. And as I mentioned before, the CAP group is utilizing 2030 as the planning horizon for the CAP, and in order to demonstrate consistency with the state's climate action efforts, we're targeting the SB 32 levels for Humboldt County at 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. Categories of the candidate greenhouse gas reduction measures that are being considered for the CAP are land use planning, low-carbon transportation, building and facility efficiency, renewable energy generation, waste prevention and reduction, and diversion, and carbon sequestration. Some of the sample GHG reduction strategies being considered include increasing sorry, increasing density of development, adding more bike lanes, promoting purchase and use of electric vehicles, providing more opportunities for transit use, increasing use of low-carbon liquid fuels like renewable diesel, and increasing energy efficiency in buildings. We're also looking at assisting with zoning implementation of small renewable energy development. supporting RCA's repower Humboldt goals, promoting forest and ag land stewardship, reducing construction and event waste, and expanding green waste programs. The CAP will expand on the selected reduction strategies and include specific objectives and actions for each strategy. The next steps while we continue to draft the CAP are to complete measure selection spreadsheets and participate in iterative, in an iterative process. Also participate in target selection meetings, review the administrative draft CAP and provide feedback, and then publish the draft CAP and engage developers and other stakeholder groups, and those who maybe haven't participated in public workshops. After that, we'll be coordinating public workshops to present the draft CAP, reviewing implementation and monitoring strategies, beginning the SEQUEL review process, and then completing the SEQUEL review process, and finally, having jurisdictions leave local CAP adoption meetings. So that concludes my really high-level overview of where we are with our CAP. As you can see, I will be coming back to you to create, discuss, and decide on specific details in the future, as well as holding meetings with the public and stakeholders, but for now, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
All right, does anybody, Councilmember Bauer?
Well, I have a million questions about this, but thank you for the, for the great presentation. You have a really good timeline of, you know, events that we're going to be going through in this process, but what are, what are the actual timelines? Are we looking at trying to have a CAP in place by 2025? Or that's, that's my first question.
So with the current timeline that we're on, we're hoping that the CAPs, all jurisdictions' caps will be adopted this fall. So 2021.
That's
A lot of that is going to depend on how long the SEQUEL process actually takes and what we decide to do in that SEQUEL process, whether it's a qualified CAP or a non-qualified CAP.
And what do we think about, that was another one of my questions, the qualified versus non-qualified, maybe in layman terms? I don't even, I don't understand what, what that means. Can you explain?
So if a CAP is qualified, it means that you can use that document and that, and the SEQUEL that was done for that climate action plan to tier off of for other projects. So if a big industrial development comes in and they're needing use permits and coastal development permits, we can tier off of the climate action plan and the SEQUEL that was done for the climate action plan as opposed to having them do a whole GHG emissions study all on their own.
Okay, that makes, that makes good sense, definitely.
And obviously, the, the reverse is true. If you have a non-qualified CAP, then they're having to do the study.
Okay, and then one more, and then I'll let some other council members ask questions. The Environmental Indicator Accounting Services, so would that be, is that the entity that's going to help measure our GHG numbers?
Yes, we have two representatives who are members of the CAP Coalition. They have been preparing a lot of the spreadsheets and documents that we've been using. They're the ones that are preparing the emissions level reports and the forecasts, and they are with us this evening. So if you had a specific question for them, I'm sure that they would be happy to help us out.
No, not specific, but I just think that seems to be a big concern, right? We have really important targets we have to meet, and hopefully that we're going to be having some really tight accounting, you know, that, that accounts for what we're doing, because we don't have a lot of time. So I think that's just a concern that I've heard conveyed from our community, and it's good to know that there'll be some serious accounting. Thanks.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you for the report. In, in terms of the requirement to implement with a SEQUEL-qualified CAP, can you say more about how, who will be kind of assessing the requirements to implement and how we'll like maintain those goals?
So the Coalition is looking at the data that's been provided by RCA and EIAAS. And we will be making some preliminary recommendations when we come back to both council and the public. And we'll use that process then to narrow down what the measures and what the targets and strategies are for our CAP.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Arroyo.
I'm sorry, you've mentioned that there was going to be public meetings. Could you, could you reiterate what the outreach process will look like? I mean, I know we're working under this fast timeline, but I know this is just sort of a big one and a difficult time to be doing public outreach. So could you say a little more about that?
So, public outreach will happen after the administrative Coalition review of the, the draft CAP that's, that's happening. After that, we'll be looking to get some workshops or public meetings going, not only here in Eureka, but throughout the county and other jurisdictions. So we'll kind of coordinate those so that we're doing them hopefully in succession, and kind of gathering information from other jurisdictions that we can use for Eureka too. After that, we'll come back, finish putting together the climate action plan with the input from councils and boards of supervisors and the public, and then eventually there will be a final draft that we will work on for the SEQUEL.
All right, anything else? Councilmember Moulton.
I'm just wondering if there is an actual benefit or an advantage to an unqualified CAP? What, talk a little bit about the details of the qualified CAP. What's the other side of that?
So the unqualified CAP, like, I I guess you could consider it an advantage that you don't have to monitor over time, whether or not you're meeting your goals as far as your emission reductions. But disadvantage to it is, as I mentioned before, that folks who are going through a SEQUEL process would have to perform their own GHG emission studies in order to be able to complete their SEQUEL processes.
Thank you. I'm just curious, what's the point of setting goals without testing whether or not you're actually meeting those goals?
That's an excellent question.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? I'm sure as we start to get more details, we'll the questions will be many. And do we have any comments from the audience on this item or from the public?
I do see a raised hand there.
Excellent. Could you, I don't see their names on mine, so if you can call them. All right, I, I see her down at the bottom. Aisha, you're on the phone. Do you have a comment? Hi, Aisha Sisna, did you mean to make a comment? Are you trying to unmute?
I can see she's unmuted, but we can't hear you, Aisha.
Oh, and she's not unmuted on her phone, so her audio is on phone. Let's do this. I'm going to, oh, I saw her go away. I will.
Can you hear me now by chance?
I can, perfect.
Oh, that was, that was odd. I was dialed in without knowing it. That's embarrassing. Anyhow, my name's Aisha, and I actually am part of the, I think the CAP Coalition as Kristen named us. I work at the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, so that's my relation. And I just thought it would be worth saying that Kristen and the city had hosted a public workshop, a CAP public workshop back, I don't know if that was 2018 or 2019, but that got pretty good reception. So while we are gearing up to do more public workshops, I did want to just give praise to the city of Eureka for hosting that, that first one. And Connor, the county lead, had, had organized and helped coordinate those. But during that workshop, we had received all sorts of feedback from the public. We had initial measures and got feedback and had conversations on which measures they liked and which they didn't. And then also speaking to the qualified versus unqualified, there's one of the other drivers of climate action plan development and getting these adopted is positioning a jurisdiction for additional funding for related projects. So we've been trying to suss out whether like a qualified CAP is singularly eligible, or if unqualified CAPs can get in on that game too. And so far, I don't think we've had, we've, we've been given any indication that like an unqualified CAP wouldn't possibly be, play into the eligibility for, for some grants. So in addition to streamlining permitting, that being one of the, the big benefits of adopting a CAP, a qualified CAP, I believe an unqualified or qualified CAP would, would help the city access additional funds for various climate action projects. My colleagues at EIAAS may have more to say on that, but just thought I would chime in to add some texture to the answers Kristen provided before.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak to this? I do see she mentioned Connor, and I see Connor out there, I think it's the same one, or we have EIAAS. If any of you wanted to speak on public comments, raise your hand, and if not, I'll take it back to council. It looks like I will bring it back to council for comments, or wait, it's receiving the report. By now, but do you have to do some, I will, I get you, Kim. I promise, I just want to ask about, huh?
I saw Connor's hand go up.
Oh, did you?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I don't see it on mine. Thank you, Connor. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that Kristen has been a pleasure to work with, and it's been great to work closely with the city of Eureka on this.
Well, thank you. I am glad that Kim saw your hand go up. It literally does not look like it's up on my thing, so thank you very much. All right. Everybody else? Okay, sorry, thank you, Kim. And I was going to ask Pam before I bring it back for comment. Do we have to make a motion for this, or do we just, okay, so just any comments? That anybody might have? Councilmember Castellano.
Well, thank you to all who've been working on this, and thank you Principal Planner Gatz for, for your work. I'm personally excited for a qualified, you know, to go through the qualification steps. And I'm just looking forward to moving forward on this.
Next, Councilmember Moulton and Arroyo.
Also want to add my thanks to Principal Planner Gatz. Thank you for bringing this and the excellent report. I also want to say I think if we're going to set goals, we need to pay attention to whether or not we are meeting those goals. And I'm always thinking about the next council, and when we set goals or intentions, whether or not those things are going to carry through to the next group of people. I think setting real goals means that we might be able to make real change. Also, as a coastal city, I'm glad that we're right on top of this and getting out in front of it. We need to be leading the way.
All right, Councilmember Arroyo.
Not to be antagonistic, Councilmember Moulton, but I was just about to bring up like why I might think that there's a benefit to setting some goals that don't have, that can't necessarily, or that we know we might not be able to really get enough data about. Just because we're a challenging, a challenging place to, to study and to get data around. And, you know, sometimes it's just limited, and so I can envision situations where it would be worthwhile to set a goal that's a policy goal that would guide future actions, or even an aspirational goal. I mean, at this point with climate change, we really, I think, want to be as targeted and specific as we possibly can to really make, make action happen. But I do still see some possible benefit to goals that encourage behavior or change the way of thinking over time, as well as guide future policy decisions. So those are some reasons why, you know, sure, I would love to see everything be able to be thoroughly monitored and for us to get a report and future decision-makers to get a report, as well as the community. But I, I know there might be times where that's not the case, so I hope that we can, I hope we can remain somewhat flexible, and I don't know, you know, exactly what the tools are for creating this. But yeah, I just wanted to, I was thinking about, you know, planning efforts I've been a part of, and how sometimes if you can't monitor it, people don't want to include it, and I, I just, I don't know that that's always beneficial. So my thoughts are to keep it responsive to the needs I hand.
All right, any other comments on this? Thank you very much, Principal Planner Gatz, and to all of your colleagues on the climate action plan who sat through this meeting so that they could support you. And it's great to hear that you're a good partner in the, in the plan, because I know council's very supportive of making sure that it gets done well. So, thank you very much. It is 8:06, 8:08. I can't tell, my eyes are a little blurry right now, but we have one, one more real item in council reports. I'm thinking we might want to take a break and come back. This is generally when we take a break, we can either push through or we could take a break. I'm good either way, so.
How about a we break?
A we, those are my favorite kind, so.
We as in short, not.
No, oh, no, I totally was following you there, and I lost the thread on the, of the way it could be taken. So five minutes even seems generous, but can we do five minutes? Excellent. I will see you guys back at eight, it'll be basically 8:15, 8:14. Thanks. I am happy for the next report, which is our fiscal year 2021-22 Strategic Visioning Document.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor stated, this is the fiscal year 2021-22 Strategic Visioning. I'm going to share my screen here real quick. Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm not you, I'm new to Foxit. Either way, this is going to have to work. I don't know how to get it into presentation mode. I apologize. So as you guys are aware, we went through the strategic goals, a strategic visioning process through the month of February and a portion of March. Those goals were decided on during that process through council input and discussions with management staff and also some input from the public. And so tonight, we're looking to adopt those strategic goals and initiatives. And just to give a quick review of those, all of the goals and initiatives, council wanted to make sure that there is an overall commitment to and dedication to fiscal responsibility, employee welfare development, addressing climate change, and improving diversity, equity, and inclusion. We developed five different goals. Each of the goals had a little summary of what the intent of those goals were and associated initiatives. An alphabetical order, and they're not in any sort of priority, but in alphabetical order. The first goal is community pride. And the intent there is to increase community pride through beautification of residential, commercial, and public spaces and effectively deliver outreach and programming that promotes all the services provided by the city and encourages diversity and equity for all. The initiatives that were developed to accomplish this goal was the 2030 Park Improvement Project to adopt the Climate Action Plan, to adopt ordinances in residential and commercial areas, regulating receptacle and common receptacle locations for solid waste and recycling. The Broadway Corridor Improvement Project, the Clark Plaza Upgrades, the Eco Eureka Trash Bashes in conjunction with Pacific Outfitters and Power Eureka and Neighborhood Beautification Projects and the Neighborhood Beautification Program. The Grace Martin Memorial Park, which will be located down at Halverson Park, adjacent to Sacco Amphitheater. The HNI Corridor Project for Traffic Safety. The Henderson Center Street Improvement Project, which is underway. To also hire a full-time code enforcement officer to address some of the code enforcement and abatement issues that we have. Hire a full-time CSAT Officer and EPD. And that was one that was decided at the end of the Strategic Visioning. Hire two new full-time facilities employees and two new parks employees to address some of the beautification projects in our commercial areas. Regional branding with Eddie Alexander to enhance the local messaging and get a little more regional support and just marketing and messaging. Sequoia Park Improvement Project, which is ongoing right now. The Street Art Festival and the mural projects, utility box art to utilize street staff to support off-hour neighborhood beautification projects. So this goes along with the Neighborhood Beautification Program. We'll put together kits for them to be available for these neighborhood volunteer groups to do beautification and they'll help with trash pickup and provide tools and equipment necessary for the beautification projects. Continue to support the volunteer trail stewards, which are, you know, at all sections of our trail. And then to also enhance and continue to work on the Uplift Job Skills Training Program, which is ongoing. The next focus area or strategic goal is economic development as it relates to housing. And the intent of that is to maximize all levels of housing stock within the city limits and expand upon the successful social and services programming provided by CSAT and Uplift. The initiatives that were approved for this were the Seven City Parcel RFQ for very low to in, excuse me, to low-income housing. The others to adopt a Climate Action Plan, adopt a Homeless Action Plan, accessory dwelling unit financing program, alternative multi-discipline response and diversion programs, which are being worked on with Uplift and CSAT currently. Continue with CSAT and some of the programming that they're providing. Continued pursuit of grant funding and to expand upon that. The full implementation of the diversion program, which is being worked on by CSAT and Uplift currently, to fund uplift through the general fund so that they can get off of the the grant program and start to have a more sustainable funding source for them. Support the Link Project for the three, the first of the three RFQs that were developed for the parking lots for affordable housing. Prevent communities members from losing housing. To pursue HUD and Housing Community Development Grant Opportunities like the Home Key Grant and the Home Grants that are available for conversions into transitional and permanent supportive housing of other properties. To continue and enhance the uplift program. And then also to develop a vacation dwelling unit management ordinance. And then finally, to have a registration ordinance for vacant properties. The third goal that was approved, I mean, that was agreed upon is the economic development and supporting local businesses. The intent of that is to engage and support sustainable local businesses through streamlined permitting, updated coastal zoning regulations, advocacy, and promotion and recruitment of diverse businesses, business ownership in an effort to build business resilience and community equity. Initiatives that were developed for that is to, once again, adopt the Climate Action Plan, adopt the Economic Strategic Plan Update, adopt the Local Coastal Plan and Land Use Plan, adopt the Local Coastal Plan Implementation Plan. To continue with the bridge programs for businesses to help support them getting through the pandemic. Commercial vacancy and incentives, commercial vacancy incentives to not have vacancies or fines to address vacancies and develop an ordinance related to that. Consolidation of business servicing agencies. Enhance funding and outreach for businesses to hire the full-time code enforcement officer and then the two new facilities employees and parks employees to help with beautification in our commercial areas. And then, of course, continue to work with Eddie Alexander to support regional branding of Eureka. And then the fourth goal is effective governance. And the intent of that is to improve participation and efficiency of our public meeting processes by increasing outreach to the community and defining the roles and responsibilities of elected officials, appointed boards and commissions, and committee members and staff. And the initiatives to support this goal are adopt the modified Rosenberg Rules of Order to make sure that we have a balanced budget and not a deficit budget. To consolidate the boards, commissions, and committees to improve staff efficiency and effectiveness. And then continued with the Eureka Municipal Code Updates to make them consistent with our organizational structure. Continue policy updates, council agenda and developing a new business section for areas for council to put new business on future agendas. Develop Boards, Commissions, and Committee Member Handbook. Of course, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, which is underway. And we have our Mission, Vision, and Value Staff Meeting this Friday. I'm related to that. Eliminate redundant boards and commissions and committees. Make sure we support employee welfare and development. Updates the Municipal Code for Boards, Commissions, and Committees. And then to restore competitiveness with similar agencies for employees and their compensation. The final goal is traffic safety. And the intent of that is to make the streets of Eureka safe for all modes of transportation, including pedestrians. And the initiatives for that is to continue to work on the Beta Zoo Trail and seek construction funding for that. The Broadway Corridor Improvement Project. The C Street Bike Boulevard. Develop some defensive driving classes in our Community Services Department. The HNI Corridor Project, once again, the Humble County Association of Governments Grants and to pursue those. The Henderson Center Street Improvements. Highway Safety Improvement Grants from Caltrans, continue to pursue those. Implement some of the task force recommendations that the mayor has developed. Increase enforcement through EPD and Office of Traffic Safety Grants for overtime for enforcement. Reorganize the Traffic Safety Engineering Division. Improve and follow up on the Transportation Safety Action Plan. And then develop wayfinding for non-motorized routes. And then also to develop a value statement prioritizing the use of roadways through public input and council feedback on that. And so that, those are the five goals and the associated initiatives. So staff is recommending that council adopt the goals and the initiatives and are available for any questions.
Councilmember Braga, and then Councilmember Arroyo.
Not to be nitpicky, but under the traffic safety, I thought we had discussed transportation safety. Transportation safety includes all modes of transportation, whereas traffic tends to speak more to vehicles. So I'm, could we change that to transportation?
I would assume that the rest of council is okay with that.
Yeah, we did talk about that at the Strategic Visioning too.
I'll take the blame for that one. I didn't get it. Sorry.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I also have something that might seem nitpicky, but it was based partly on a community member's question or observation after reading this. That under effective governance, restore competitiveness with similar agencies, I think was maybe misinterpreted to mean like, oh, it's like us against Arcata or something. But that was intended to be like maybe wage competitiveness or compensation competitiveness. So I just wondered if we could add another word in there so that later, when this is read, people aren't like, oh, yeah, they want to bring back the Union Town Bayport Brawl.
We could do it, we could do it as a fundraiser.
I was actually. That would be super fun. Karen.
Let's absolutely do that, just as a little asterisk for future.
We'll bring back the wrestling crew and we'll, we'll set that up.
Anything else anybody has? We spent, I mean, we spent a little time with it. Thanks for catching that. Councilmember Braga too. I remember that discussion and didn't notice it when he read through it. All right, do we have any comments from the audience on this item?
No, we, we did receive a written email that I forwarded to everyone.
I did see that. All right, so I will bring it back for any other questions or comment. Or I guess we, do we have to move to receive this? Yeah, you wanted to adopt the strategic goals. So does anybody want to make a motion to adopt the strategic goals? Councilmember Molten.
You said comments, we can make, can we make a comment or do we have to move first?
No, you can make a comment.
Another nitpicky thing on the, sorry, now I don't have it in front of me. The regulation as to where trash receptacles could be. In the visioning, my understanding is that we were talking about commercial areas. And in the goals there, it says commercial and residential. I'm not opposed to that necessarily, but would like to see those issues addressed separately, like individually, I think one I'm much more in favor of than the other, just right off the bat. That makes sense, just to address them separately?
Yes, and I think that we probably have things in place already with guidelines for sharing receptacles and what the minimum amount is and stuff like that. So that may already be addressed. We could just probably keep it to commercial.
Okay, thank you. Can I move? Oh, no.
Councilmember Arroyo. Oh, I think she's saying that she can move.
Yep, go ahead. I was, I was going that way.
Okay, I don't have the language now. Move to adopt these strategic goals.
As presented.
Second, as presented with the small corrections.
Yeah, okay, second from Councilmember Arroyo. Any further discussion?
Just one more thing. I just, I just wanted to say that, and just to bring back that this was a really great process to work with everybody in our council. It was, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of focused discussion. And everybody was kind and got along and was respectful. And that, even the, even the facilitators commented on that, that we really have a good team. And I just want to let, you know, the public know how much I appreciate that. It's great to have people that are willing to work together to move forward to our goals. So thank you, guys.
That was very nice. So we have a motion, a second, and any further discussion? If not.
No.
Oh, Councilmember Bauer.
I just want to say one thing. I mean, for those, for the, for the community, when they see it, I got to admit, it seems kind of daunting. It's a lot, a large list of initiatives, you know? But a lot of those are happening and a lot of those aren't really, you know, massive undertakings. And I'm really excited that we did this. And I look forward to us, you know, taking off and working on these initiatives. And it was a pleasure to work with everybody on it. So thank you.
Yeah, and if people thought that list was daunting, they should have seen what we wanted before staff made us realize you can't do everything. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, and it looks like we might be ready to have a vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Molten.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Braga.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, now we are moving on to our city manager reports.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I don't know if everybody has met him, but back in December, we hired a chief building official. His name is Kevin Roybal. He came from basically the Rockland area. His most recent. Basically, the Rockland area. His most recent job was working for UC Davis as their building official. And he's come in and made some some changes and trying to streamline some of the processes that we've had. So I thought it'd be a good idea to introduce him to council and get him to talk about some of the. Streamlining and transparency things that he's working on for the the community. So welcome, Kevin. Excuse me, Chief Building Official Ruble.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening, men and mayor, councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to allow me to introduce myself and and give you a quick kind of breakdown of what we've been working on. We've identified three focused areas that we're working on currently. We're working on efficiency, predictability and transparency. You know, we're trying to take a more customer service approach to our process and tailor it to our customers. In so what have we been working on? We've been evaluating our workflow processes. We've been really trying to make them more consistent and, you know, make them. Essentially. Look for opportunities to streamline projects or processes and and applications as they come through our office. We're also working on making our permit process more predictable for customers. So how are we doing that? We've established by creating checklists so that folks, when they're submitting projects to our office, they know exactly what the expectations are. And what they need in order to get a complete package to our planner viewers or to our consultants so that they don't get turned around. And in create more time going through the review process. We've had, we've also been working on our permit user guide. So what we're looking at is trying to essentially look at the initial customer, the folks that are coming in that are first time applicants. And really trying to describe the process from submittal to permit issuance. And so that that really kind of helps them understand what they're going to be expecting and hopefully trying to make their experience experience a little bit easier. The main thing, though, is that we're looking at our billing department software. And we're moving away from our track it software and going with open gov, which is going to allow us to move towards a digital process. And that's going to help with the permitting process digitally as well as the electronic plan review. And that's going to allow for customers not to even have to come into the office. It'll allow for better communication. It'll allow for us just being more transparent because with these permitting softwares, they have a citizen access portal. Where an applicant can go online and take a look at where their project is, who it's been assigned to. And, you know, how long it's either been with the city or how long it's been with the design profession. So I think that'll give great accountability and just increased visibility. You know, I'm excited to be here, a little nervous, first time in front of you all, but I think there's a lot of positive that we're going to be able to accomplish here with the city. We do have a good team. They're they're open to change. And I think if we can kind of keep this as a more customer process experience overall, I I I'm very excited about the future. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
I do want to say welcome. I've talked about you, but I haven't had a chance to actually meet you in person. I we have missed when we come into the office because we're not there. We're not all there very often anymore. So it's good to see your face. Councilmember Royal.
Want to echo that and say welcome. So I'm curious, what kind of process you've undertaken to understand what. What folks really want from the department? Like, have you, what has that looked like for you and what have you heard so far?
So I've reached out to design professionals. I've actually spoken with folks that are coming into the office or at least, you know, through a virtual meeting. And, you know, working with staff, kind of trying to see what 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 they've been doing in the past. What we can do in the future as far as making those changes tailored more to the customer. I think really right now, I've had a lot of good, positive experiences with some of the design professionals in the community hearing feedback. As well as what some of their wants are, some of the, you know, the not so good experiences, but some of the good experiences they have had with the city. So overall, just trying to take a poll, take the temperature with the folks that we're working with in the community and also with our internal staff.
Councilmember Braga.
I too want to say welcome and I too, I really appreciate your tackling the customer service element. We've been really working on that for quite a while now. And it's great to see that it has been improving some, but I look forward to seeing the streamlining of the process and the comfortability. Of people coming in and feeling more comfortable with that process. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
For meeting in person.
Thank you.
Curious to how familiar are you? How familiar are you with the software? Did you work at that with it before you came here or you?
Actually, I worked with track it quite a bit. You know, I was more partial to Excela just because I had worked with it before and I didn't hear or I wasn't exposed to open gov until I got here. But looking at that software, I think it's going to be a good, a good solution for our department. And just overall for the permitting process. It seems very intuitive. It seems to tailor more towards the customer. And it offers all the electronic and digital processes that we need in order to, you know, be digital. And I think electronic planner view is really going to help us out quite a bit. Folks will be able to submit projects from their homes or their office and it will cut down on foot traffic. It also cut down on storage space and also help us with just overall being able to notify an applicant, keeping them then informed about their project. And, you know, keeping that really straightforward. So I'm excited about it. I I I the the permitting or sorry that the 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 markup tool that open gov uses is called Bluebeam. And I have a little, I'm familiar with it and I think it's a really easy software or easy markup tool to use for staff. And it just has a lot of benefits. I mean, you can really export comments, you can market plans. You can send them directly to the design professional. You can also invite outside interfacing agencies to come in and participate in the plan review. So there's just so many opportunities that I think will benefit from.
I'm going to have a couple more questions all of a sudden. Does anybody, who else in Humboldt County, do you know of any of the other cities or the county are using the? Kind of the digital plans. I'm just wondering if our our local folks are going to have to adapt to this or they're if they're going to be like, oh, okay, we do this at the county already or?
I do believe the county has a version of electronic review process. They're using Excela. I don't necessarily know about Arcata. They've kind of gone through a few different management changes over there. It's still my understanding that they're not fully digital yet. But I think, you know, like I said, everybody's kind of moving in that direction and eventually they'll they will be too.
Yeah, it's cool to be the first, but it's almost cooler to be the second because then you don't have to train everybody. Or at least not completely. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, well, welcome. That wasn't too bad, was it? I told Miles I was going to try to think of something, you know?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
You're welcome.
So I just want to thank Kevin. He's done a great job in coming here and I really appreciate it, Kevin. I think that, you know, some of the stuff that I've dealt with since I've worked here, even before I became city managers. I think that transparency aspect is going to be really important because half the time I receive complaints about whether it's a building or planning process. It has a lot to do with so many people being involved in the project. And so you'll have a property owner who's wondering what the heck's going on. And the typical response is, well, the city's lagging. And well, a lot of the times it'll happen that they'll have a design person that. We're waiting for a response back from and that's the thing that's so having that ability for the property owner to go look. And be transparent and see where that's at. There's it's going to be good for everybody involved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. And thank you for bringing it up. We haven't talked about that enough. And now it is time for our council reports and I will go ahead and start with councilmember Bauer.
Oh.
And now Nick sent it up.
Oh gee, you know, I I participated in the tour of Eureka High School with a few of you. And I just thought that was so cool to see the facilities, that modern welding shop, the old auto shop. And and just kind of thank the community. I mean, that's really community funded work, you know? The opportunities that our our school, our our high school kids have is have is pretty awesome. So that was a really fun time to go check that out. I also participate participated in a May Day cleanup that councilmember Castellano put together with city staff. And that was super fun. My wife and I went and I think it was like 12:30 and we're like, what? We're done? We've got more to do. We worked on Wabash and it was, it was really cool too, because people drove by. And we're like honking, giving us thumbs up. People are walking by thanking us for for for, you know, doing that. And I just got to say that I picked up about 500 cigarette butts out of the gutters. And I was a little annoyed by that. But, you know, that's a behavioral change that I don't know. I remember when our kid did this like 25 years ago. Put out trash, you know, cans for for cigarette butts. That was pretty disheartening. But it was a great day and really fun to to work in another part of the city, you know, and help beautify the city. And city staff too were amazing. They were getting their hands dirty, helping, you know, like they weren't sitting around. They were they were working hard right alongside us. And thank them all for for all their hard work. And I just recently attended Cal Cities League of California Cities Legislative Briefing. That was actually earlier today and. It's really important that it's a good thing that we're a part of the League of Cities because there's a lot of bills. That affect local control and some things that we may need to write letters of support. A lot of mandates, unfunded mandates on on cities that I find kind of. A little bit annoying and lucky, though, we have these great people working there representing our interests. And but I'll I'll report back probably next next meeting about with some issues that we should probably. Take up and write letters of support. Other than that, I think that's about it. Thanks.
All right. Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, hey, everybody. Let's see, I. You know, like all of us, staying busy out there for Eureka. I participated in in a call with an organization called Rebuilding 101. That was, this is a national organization that supports people fixing up their homes. Who may have economic challenges in doing that. So that's was kind of interesting just to learn what's about some national resources, but also strategies for using AmeriCorps employees. They've they've kind of created the system for that. I attended an informational meeting about a. Exciting new hostel project that's in the works. I hosted along with Samantha with the Sweeney with the Old Town Community Alliance, an intergalactic cleanup. For Earth Day and it was really fun. And we're going to do more kind of costume, we costume themed cleanups in the future. So be on the lookout. And I want to say just thanks to all the folks with Project Eureka who are out that day too. It was really fun to have. And Vandemonium came out and played, you know, just to have this, like so many people out celebrating Eureka, doing something for the community. It, yeah, it's 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 fun to get out and do something. So thank you for everyone for participating. And it was great to see some live music and it really livened up. Old Town. I I attended the regional arts leadership and hosted the regional arts leadership meeting. Sorry, I got kittens and they're like literally attacking me right now. So that's happening. You just don't see it, but I'm it's making me laugh. I've been continuing to. Host housing meetings and I attend broadband meetings. Like councilmember Bauer and Mayor Seaman, I attended the Eureka High Facilities Tour. And. Participated in collaborated with city of Eureka staff for the Wabash cleanup. And just special thanks to Robin Fasker, who's amazing and so like worked so hard for the city. It was, you know, I just really appreciate our city staff. And then also Pearson's for donating plants and express personnel for, you know, lending us access to their building site. And yes, councilmember Bauer, the cigarette butts, there's so many of them. I don't know. If it would be good to have PSAs about this, about just informing people. It's they really aren't. Good for the waterway, for, you know, the the environment. And then finally. I I stopped in over at Saint Vincent de Paul and. And actually, you know, I just talked to someone who had been housed through the Veterans Program, the Veterans Building. Across from the co-op there and. And generally, I, you know, I talk to people and I just want to say housing changes people's lives, having access to housing, stable housing. That's safe and has amenities. It it changes people's lives. And I know there's a lot of. Different kinds of conversations happening around housing in in our community right now, but I really want to keep that at the core. That we need to really, in my, from my perspective, like that it's so important to maintain. Like the vision that we're we're really trying to stabilize people's lives and provide housing. And if people in our communities don't have housing, it affects, of course, the people who don't have access to that housing. Of all types, you know, I mean, like the affordable housing that is being built, like my friends would qualify for, you know, it's it's like these, like. People need need housing. And so just. Just want to reiterate that. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Molton.
Hello, thank you very much. Um, it's so nice to hear about all this work happening around city pride and beautification. I've spent some time recently working on my own project for the Eureka Street Art Festival, which is a really, 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 really big wall. Totally not intimidated because I'm the one who painted it in the first place. But all of these different things and all of these different ways that the city incorporates our people power and our infinite resource of creativity. Just make me really happy to to be on this council and to live here right now. I missed the EHS tour. I was really looking forward to seeing the Ag Building, but I missed it for a good reason. My second vaccine shot knocked me on my butt. And despite that, I'm very, very, very happy that I got it. And I encourage everyone who is not vaccinated to please do that right now for everybody's sake. And I've heard a rumor of folks skipping the second shot because they want to avoid the 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 bad effects to come with the second shot. And I just wanted to point out that if you don't get the second shot, then you just get those bad effects when you catch the disease. So. There's no getting around it, but it's not too bad. At least sometimes for some people, it's not bad at all. Mostly for council service, I've been walking the ward and answering sort of specific calls from people. I encourage my constituents to reach out to me. Oftentimes, people will have a question or an issue or a problem. And when I go look into it to find out what solutions can be done, there's something like already in the works. And somebody wants to know when their street's being fixed. And I'm like, hang on, let me thick, let me check on that for you. And then the street paper shows up the next day and I totally take credit for that. But I encourage people to look up the capital improvement plan. It doesn't give like super specific timelines, but it shows you what's happening in general. It's all available on the city's website. I know that's going to get some improvements coming up, but it's also just an incredible resource that is super dense with information. So people can always call me and ask and I can look stuff up too. But if you're curious what the city is up to, by the nuts and bolts, everything's listed up there on the website. So check it out.
I know. And I I'm sure the school will let you come to our. Right on. And I I'm sure the school will let you come tour anytime you want. Councilmember Raya.
Well, I've had a different couple of weeks, mostly comprised of sitting in the ICU with my mom who's been really sick. So this is your public service announcement to be sure that if you have any infection that is completely wiped out before you go about your life, because she had sepsis and it was really bad. And she is looking up and like getting better, I mean, and just got transferred to rehab facility. So that was good. I was just, some of you know, I was really excited to welcome her to Humboldt, which is she is making her home for the rest of her life. And I want that to be a long life. So thankfully, she got really good care here. Actually, the acute facilities at St. Joe's were fantastic. So not the kind of tour that I wanted to do of our local medical facilities, but I was pretty blown away at how good all the acute care was. And as we were leaving, a lot of COVID patients were coming in. They were actually trying to kind of get people out of the ICU so they could turn those all into negative pressure rims that they're designed for right now and and be caring for people. So I reiterate that the importance of getting vaccinated and continuing to use care. I know it's really hard to keep going like this, and it's easy to get lax, but it is so important and so that people can get treated for both COVID and non-COVID alike. And so that's most of what I've been doing is caregiving and standing by and being a decision maker when my loved one was not available to do that for for themselves. But in addition to that, I've just come off a year of active duty with the Coast Guard. So that was a great experience to get closer to the missions and the people that make up our local Coast Guard and just a all around a great experience, even though it was unexpected to be on a year's worth of active duty. Thankfully, it was right here at home. So that was that was pretty great. And in my city capacity, I did I did miss some things in the last couple of weeks. Thankfully, none of them were critically important, but the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, monthly meeting, it's actually kind of every other month right now, unless we need to meet on a monthly basis. That's a new change. We were just finding that there wasn't too much on each agenda, so we were able to to go to every other month much of the time. So the next meeting will be tomorrow. So I I think anyone who's interested in talking about transit is always welcome to reach out to me. I know we got some public communication about wanting to encourage more use of transit that came to all the councils. So always something I like to hear about. And I think I will leave it at that for now, but it's nice to see all your faces again.
You too. And I've been thinking about you a whole lot. Councilmember Burgel.
Aloha.
I was going to say your two weeks have been a little different than that.
My two weeks have been a little different. So I missed the last meeting because it was my birthday and I took my son to Hawaii. And I have to tell you that what a gift to be able to come back to where we live in such a beautiful place. You know, Hawaii is glorious. It's gorgeous. But when I came home, I went on a run with a group of women for the full moon at Clam Beach. And I was like, you know, the only difference between here and Hawaii is 30 degrees and the foliage. You know, I mean, we live in exquisitely beautiful place, and I'm just so thankful and grateful for that. And I experience it. I try to experience it every day. But just a few things, I just want to let you know that the the Redwood Skywalk will be opening May 14. You can be a member and it's included in your membership. Or when you go, if you pay, it's included in your gate fee. The grand opening will be June 4, and so that should be an exciting thing. And if you haven't gone through any of the beta tours or any of those things, I would really encourage you to go. It's 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 incredible. Just saying. So that was really neat. There's a lot going on at Sequoia Park right now with the with the play structure. They are so fast, you guys. I mean, I work, I walk there pretty regularly, and it's just incredible to me how quickly things change. You know, it's almost, you know, every few days, there's something new and exciting happening. And one of the things I love about the the new playground is that they have a portion of it that kind of mirrors the skywalk for the kids. So it's going to be a fun kind of thing for the structure. So it's kind of, it's really exciting. And there's a new bathroom and all that stuff. I did get to attend the Soft Opening of the Arts Alive, and somebody here was talking about live music. Oh, my gosh. What a phenomenal, I mean, it's crazy. Like, I guess you don't realize when you don't go to you don't experience it just how fun and amazing it is. And we did a lot of dancing and it was just like life, life is almost, well, it's not really all the way back, but we're working on our way back there. And I was just so thankful and grateful for that. Oh, my God. And then lastly, you know, I've been really thinking a lot. I I went to I've been also paying really a lot of close attention to these housing meetings and and how people are discussing what's happening with, you know, with some of the projects that we're doing. And what I've come to in going to these meetings is really remembering the importance of a healthy community is really raising people up. It's not, it's not about, you know, those people or, you know, this, those derelict people or, you know, these people are going to create this or that. It's about encouraging and raising our our people up. And so I just wanted to remind people that that that's the goal. That's that's the goal. That's the gift of life is to be able to watch somebody grow into who they are, you know, and and have those opportunities just like everybody else. And so with that, I propose a kindness challenge. And I've been looking into this a lot. And what I propose is that each individual in our city do one, one, just one kind thing for someone every day. And you know, I calculated that. And if 27,000 people did one, one kind thing a day, just one, we would have 837,000 kind deeds in a month. 837,000 kind deeds in one month. So with that being said, I encourage all of us to try just one kind thing a day, whether that's opening a door, saying hello, looking at somebody in the face, smiling at somebody, buying someone's drink in in the drive through, whatever that looks like for you. Kindness builds strong community. Treating people with respect and dignity builds strong community. Raising up people builds strong community. And so I just, I feel, I'm just so grateful that that we live in a community where that really happens a lot. But I just want to put that challenge out there and y'all can report back to me and people can report back in public comment just how that's working for you. You know, the gift, the last thing I'll say about that is the gift about that is that when you just, when I do something nice for somebody else or kind, I get so much more out of it than they do. I feel so much better about myself and about my world. So I would really encourage folks to take that. And with that, that's my report.
There you go. That's a great way to end the meeting. That was our final report. So we'll leave on a, we'll leave with a directive.
Can I just say one more thing? 837,000 kind deeds in one month if you do one kind thing a day. Just saying.
There you go. We all have our jobs. And we will see you in two weeks. Thank you very much. Talk to you later.